Now that the pre-show is over, I'm going to call this meeting to order.
He was on fire.
Yeah, that's why I'm calling it ordered. Could all please rise and join me in saluting the flag? Ready to begin?
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Pleasure may stand for a moment of silence to remember the city of Costa Mesa city engineer, Fabria Vazelli, who recently lost her courageous battle with cancer.
She was young.
That's a tough loss for the city history. Okay, Madam President, the roll call.
Secretary James Thurman.
President.
Assistant Secretary Arlene Schaefer is currently in the middle of a CCA conference. Secretary Robert Uden.
Here.
Vice President August Perry.
Here.
And President Michael Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, any ceremonial matters or presentations?
No, Mr. President.
Any late communications?
No, Mr. President.
Then we'll move to public comments. The time set aside for persons to speak on items within our subject matter that are not listed on the agenda. Mr. Moser, you've indicated a desire to speak.
Yes, thank you. Members of the board, my name is Jim Moser. The non-agenda comment I wanted to make, as you may recall, the last item on your January agenda was the district council presenting to you the petition for review by the state water board of the penalties that have been assessed against the district in connection with the sewer spills a couple of years ago. And the report for that said that the regional board had thirty days to possibly file an opposition to that. So I am curious, perhaps the board is curious whether the district is aware of an opposition having been filed and if so, where the public could look at what the argument is.
Thank you. Scott, I want to defer to the district council.
Well, we just received a letter from the state water board telling us what the status of it is. We don't have an opposition yet, if we will get one. It lays out certain options depending on if they respond or choose not to respond. There's a few different things that can happen. One of them is nobody responds and they do not act on it, in which case we have to file in court in ninety days. So we do not have anything filed that we're aware of at this point. We just got the notice from the state board and we're monitoring.
Second part of the question, because of the potential for litigation, that's why we don't post it. We can't post it or do anything in public.
Well, if it was a formal response by a party or anything like that, it would be public.
Okay.
So we would have no problem with that. We just wouldn't want to give away our anything that was still a work product as we were developing it. But as we file documents, those will be public and their responses will be public too.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public wishing to speak? See no one else, we'll move to the consent calendar. Mr. Moser's indicated that he'd like to speak on items six and seven, so we'll pull from the consent calendar items six and seven. Any other items to be pulled? Now entertain a motion to accept without six and seven?
With approval except for six and seven.
Second.
Any questions? All is in favor? Whoa, sorry. That motion passed unanimously with one director absent. Item six, payroll transparency disclosure.
Moser. Thank you again, President Schaefer. I should perhaps make more clear on my comment request. I didn't really need for you to pull the items. I just had suggestions for their better presentation to the public on future agenda. Item number six is a payroll transparency disclosure, which the board has been asked to approve. And it's very commendable, a supplement to the warrant resolution of all the checks paid. And it's disclosing things that are not on the warrant resolution that have to do with payroll. However, my suggestion is this really, if the public doesn't understand at all what you're approving, it really needs a little cover memo and a little reader's guide so somebody knows what these pages mean. I myself even had to look up the GL distribution. It says it has to be payroll. GL stands for general ledger. And there are six tables that totals at the bottom, but they're not labeled as to what they mean. So it's commendable to be doing it, but in its present state, without a little reader's guide, that's not very useful. And then the...
If I may?
Yes.
You know, I think it's an error that it's actually supposed to be a received and file, not an approval and file. And staff is trying to provide the supplemental information to the warrant registers without having to create additional work. So that's the reason for doing this, that instead of doing a whole report to tie it in, the board did not let us create a work product just to provide existing work products.
Yeah, I assume the same six tables will appear each month, and it would be helpful to know what the six tables represent.
Six tables.
They're a list of debits, and at the bottom of them, it says total, report total. So you have six reports, but it doesn't identify what is being reported on any of them.
Okay. Just for explanation, each report is the summary of the total expenses for that warrant run. So when we give you a warrant run for the AP, it's for the entire month, and it goes by check number and ACH. This is actually a each summary page, like page two on this where my initials show up. And then page three, those are each separate warrant runs that would be a payroll in and of themselves. So there's actually, I think there's somehow one, two, three, four, five, and six, seven, seven payrolls in this month that were presented for the board.
I have a question. When you first started, he's not going to be in approval in the future.
You know, the board has approved the budget and positions, and so I don't know that, I mean, we're not holding, this is not ratification. They have, you know, already directed the payment of payroll. And so I don't, we've never approved payroll in the past. It's just supplementary information to...
That's what I'm asking. It's more for transparency purposes. Right. I mean, but if we're going to continue to do this, Mr. Moser has a good point. You should have a little explanation, you know, clarifying what exactly they are, you know, if we do this in the future.
Well, we're, every month for certification, but if the board directs us to do a staff report, I can do it.
Essentially, the, when I look at this, my explanation is based on the description that you give. Like, I can see what a cell, someone gets a cellphone allowance or a deferred comp. I mean, to me, that tells me what that warrant is for. So I don't know if we need, I'm not sure we need to do any more explanations. I mean, I agree that if we have something like a G slash L distribution report, we probably, I'm not a big acronym, I hate acronyms.
Yeah.
So something like that may be a clarification, but what you put in this report already tells me what I need to know.
It's actually, it's a payroll report, and then the type of report is a distribution, and I don't have the ability to change that description. So I could put a cover page on it and say that we issued, you know, so many warrant registers totaling so much money. I get that's an accounting thing, but I don't have any other reports that come out of the system where, except for one that names individuals and how much they were, they took home, which is not the same thing as saying how much they paid.
Yeah.
So, you know, like, so if someone had a garnishment, that would be reflected in that, and so we would not publish the type of report.
Maybe Scott might give the...
Yeah, if it's okay with the board, I like this about Wendy, because I'm concerned, I don't want, I mean, she generates a slap report, she generates, turns out a ton of reports about the board, and now she's doing this all work.
No, I'm just thinking, keep it really simple. So let me see what, see how we can do it quickly and not for long time, and if it is a big burden, we'll bring it back to you.
Then we don't need an approval. We see, we see file item six in the consent calendar.
Why would I think the approval is what Mr. Moser's asking for?
No, he's asking for better descriptions, a better description. But we pulled an item from the consent calendar. Technically, we don't need to have a motion and a second and call for...
Well, maybe we should, because it's in there. That's, we could, you know, whenever you ready that, we can...
Okay, I'll, then I'll entertain a motion if you agree.
I'm going to approve number six.
Second.
Any other questions? All is in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously with one absent. Number seven, compensation reimbursement of the expenses.
Yes, thank you again, President Schaefer. This, again, is just a suggestion for a better, more immediate presentation in the future. And this is nothing new, but I, for some reason, have never commented on this before. This, again, is a very commendable disclosure by the director is exactly what the expenses that are being compensated for each month. And you have a form that you fill out here that gives the meetings you attend, that gives travel expenses, meeting expenses, and other expenses. What is confusing to the public is, like, the mileage is written down here and the expenses here, and it says it's supposed to be totaled up, but there's one copy of the form, and it's not in the totals, and then you have to shuffle through all of these. And if you find another where these items are paid and this one is crossed out, and there are five directors, but when the public looks at this, they see ten forms, one for the per meeting expense, and then another one for the mileage and other expenses. Since you have the need for one that has everything here, I would, I see no reason why it's into parts like that. And I would think it could just be consolidated into a single report, all the receipts and so forth after it. So five directors, one report, so it's something that's much easier for the public to understand.
Mr. President, there are two separate criteria for the different expense reimbursement. There's one is the daily salary, and then the other is expenses, and they, there's different statutes that cover each, and there's probably different components that have to be reported.
Yeah, that's, and I think, you know, that's kind of, I've always been ingrained with the fact that once a reimbursement is subject to different regulations, whereas our daily stipend is, and their taxes taken out of that one, whereas reimbursement is no tip. So that's why we...
Is there a clarification for this, Mr. Moser? This is just information received and filed as well, because the, what you're looking at is, that's called the expense reimbursement form, is actually what we call a timesheet for them. They give us the meetings they did. And so that ties to the payroll report that they were paid in the previous month, or actually, it's the future month. And then the, because they're attending a meeting, they just document their actual travel expenses on there and provide us the receipts, which would then be paid and approved by the board in the warrant register. So it's, there's no, there's no tallying of this tying to anything in this of itself. You would have to say, okay, Mr. Director Perry had six meetings, and I could take you to the month's meeting report where he's receiving his stipend and show you that he got paid for six meetings for them. And then the expense report, I could take you to the warrant register after these are approved, so next month, and show you that he got reimbursed for these expenses. But this document in and of itself is not. It's just information to show that they're disclosing everything that they do.
And it's two different checks that are issued.
Yes. I might submit to the district, though, that having the form in here twice, people in the public casually looking at this are going to see the expenses on two different places and think the directors have definitely paid for them, which I probably not in the intention to want to create, because I see the mileage expenses expected here. And then later, I see another page with the same stuff repeated.
I think what's probably more relevant is for the directors to make sure that they don't include both things on each one.
On one form.
One form is just reimbursement, and the other should be just stipend.
Yes, Mr. President, and I spoke without looking at the documents. These are all expense reimbursements, so there are two sets of criteria in the statutory scheme. One is you pay your daily up to six, only up to six meetings at the amount you've set, and that is, as Wendy explained, that goes on the payroll. This is pure expense reimbursement. I'm not sure why there's two forms unless there's a carryover, but one form doesn't, you know, because there's no limit on expense reimbursement. There's only a limit on how many days...
Right. I do the same form for SDRMA, and it's a little bit of a different format, but it doesn't, doesn't, the one we do for SDRMA doesn't allow us to break down each meeting. It's just divided to three. So I personally like the way, the way we do it on our form, but that's the reasoning, I guess.
At the very least, I would suggest consolidating the ones for particular director together rather than having the public discern in two different places.
Okay, that makes sense.
And finally, I would thank the directors both for continuing to serve the district with the compensation rate for meeting and for providing the twelve written things I believe was...
Thank you. I'm going to approve of number seven. Mr. President, the motion, second in the discussion. Off of the question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously with one director absent. All right, let's go to item, scroll, scroll through far. Item twelve, strategic plan update.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is your second quarter report on your new revised strategic plan for fiscal year 2016 through 2020. And I just wanted to bring to the board attention that, you know, so this is, we're in a, this is, this report ends on December 31st, that's the second quarter. And so we're six months into the new strategic plan. So you'll see in the report, there's not a lot of greens, not a lot of completions, because we're only six months into the five-year plan. However, you know, we did, we have five goals, and it has been completed. You'll see five of them are green, but most of them are ongoing phase. As we continue throughout the years, we'll start seeing more green progress. But again, this is your second quarter report, so I'd be answering questions.
Okay. On the first page, you know, we talked about the end of this line.
Yes.
Then how did our chemical, you know, went through that line, but how did that work?
Root control.
The root control?
Yeah.
As far as I know, it worked well. You know, the whole, the purpose of that is, well, it's guaranteed that the roots will not go back in a couple of years, so, but we won't need that time, because Rob's already, we're actually haven't bid open on that project on March 1st, so we'll have it lying here pretty soon.
There are other lines that have the chemical in there that are being tested in mine. That was just...
I think I knew that was one of the propping lines. So we're going to slip line it?
Yes, yes.
I had a curiosity, Rob, is that, have you had a chance to look at any of those lines? Those lines that were foamed or whatever?
We're waiting, when we have our next hot spot meeting, Steve will be giving that report and all of that. I saw some notes, but I want to wait until it's approved.
What's your gut feeling?
Some of the chemicals do work.
I had my sewer lateral...
Floored and...
...undid, and they foamed it. I'm not sure it's the same product, but it hasn't had a, it hasn't had a blockage in ten years. They...
And then, certainly thereafter, Ruudex company was having doubts that, what Ruud was doing this, and then it turned, mine was done.
They did.
They did, they did.
Any other questions on the update?
Well, what I'd like to do is, they're grouped in a way that looks like, you know, a lot of them will go on forever.
Like under the CIP, you've got five of them there, and if one of them doesn't get done, it'll never turn, never turn green. So I should get...
Look at it, and if you've got five projects, like five CIP projects, you know, that were set as goals for you, you could break them up and, you know, some of them...
Some of them get done earlier than someone I know to publicly look at, and they're being, they're green. And again, this is more green for the, than the natural...
The public likes the green colors.
I think the layout of this is pretty good.
Yeah. Sure good. Okay, any other questions? Then we'll, we'll dive into it, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is regarding project 101, the Westside Pump Station abandonment project. Recently, Secretary Uden, Director Perrin, myself, and District Manager Rob Hammer's met with OCSD officials to...
What day do we meet? What?
Wednesday, the day I get my taxes, yeah. Yeah, February 10th.
I need to put that on my, I need to put that on my check in person, too. Yes, it was February 10th, thank you.
Thank you.
You want to hit it, Dr. Perrin? Thank you, thank you.
So the purpose of the meeting was to go over their findings of their flow monitoring analysis of the therapy trunk. So we had a very good meeting. I think the bottom line is that the flow, the current flow for the, for the trunk is, from the pipeline, the pipe is adequate for the flow, even with all the new development that's projected for 2040. The issue that OCSD had concerns with was wet weather flow. There are concerns that it would have seen if it stormed like a ten-year storm, the pipeline would not be able to accommodate the wet, the wet weather flow. However, the issue, and they also recognize this, that data they were using is very old data. It's 2006 data, and that's, because that was the last time Orange County had significant rainfall. In fact, the flow of the data they were using was January 2005, and as I went back in Orange County's website to find out historical rain data, that was one of the wettest months we've had in recorded history. We had over seven inches of rain that month. We've never seen that. I mean, I think we haven't seen it one month since that it had that much rain.
Approximately fourteen a year.
You know, yeah, so we've seen seven inches along that, maybe a year. And they also recognize that they didn't take into consideration all the plugging ceilings we've done. You know, we said, well, that's going to have some kind of impact. They knew that, they know that, but because they had old data, there's really no way to determine how effective the plugging ceiling. So, so the bottom line is that they do still support project 101. In fact, instead, they believe instead of upsizing the trunk, they recommend reducing inflow.
This is the therapy trunk.
Yeah, reduce the inflow. So they still believe in the project, and they still want to proceed with the project. What they recommend as far as, when we came to a conclusion, to agreement, as far as trying to reduce the inflow is, identified on page two of your staff report, there was four areas we always believed that we should look at how to reduce inflow. The first is, OCSD is going to continue monitoring the flow of therapy trunk. Hopefully, maybe this next month or so, we'll get a significant rainfall, and then they can capture some more accurate data. So they're still having to, they're trying to keep the flow monitors in the therapy trunk. The second is, is that from their old data, they're going to, they're going to try to pinpoint at troubled areas and give that information to us, so then we can go and try to troubleshoot those areas and maybe do some smoke testing to find out if there's any legal connections. So that would be very helpful to us. Also, on Monday, February 29th is when Profi is going to begin the system-wide CCTV in our whole system, so we're hoping the latest CCTV can help us find if there's any deficiencies in our systems. And then fourth, and I think everyone else agrees, that inflow is coming from the fairgrounds. And so we identified some areas, and we can reach out to the fairgrounds and offer assistance to, to reduce the inflow. So that's the plan of attack, to reduce the inflow. The next step is, OCSD was going to talk to some concerned citizens, share them, share with them the data, share with them their position, and then next, they're going to meet with the city of Newport Beach and, again, share with them the analysis and finalize their negotiations to sign a three-party agreement, and OCSD will sign the agreement. My recommendation is, once that, that recommendation is fully executed by all three parties, then we'll proceed with the design.
Is any thought or consideration given to the developmental center and its future? Therapy Developmental Center, does that go into the same line?
No.
It doesn't?
That actually goes into Harbor, Harbor, yes.
Okay. Because that's potentially going to be huge development, but if it goes into Harbor, that, I would think it'll live in the fairgrounds.
Do you?
I have one question.
Oh, go ahead.
Where are they going to start the video taking that?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. I mean, we're only going to do half the system next year, and so what I would ask to check with Steve...
What are we doing this?
Yes.
Coordinated so that we do get that, but in fact, that's an issue.
So you say doing this area would be at the top of the list?
In the first year. If in fact...
My second comment was, how fast do we get with the maintenance if we have to have repairs done?
Thank you. There is infiltration of, the gusher, which water is pouring in like a hose. We get a phone call if they run into that. We ran into two of those. Last time we did it, it was them from 2006 to 2009, and we repaired them. Probably within two weeks of finding them. So we don't think we have any more of those, but if we do, we'll also get a phone call if they run into a green fire.
Okay, that's what I was claiming for you.
They let us know, and then we react.
Got any questions?
Yeah. And Bob said, when you were discussing with them, you know, were CCTV, you did before during the route, and we are, and this time?
And the, the study, let's see, the original, the original study, Orange County Sand District Study, found some infiltration and some in...
Concerned in our area, and whatever, this water, you know, got drained into the system and isn't there when they're looking. And there's no...
Not much on the scene. As soon as we find a green fire, we want to get hot on it.
Yeah.
That was a question.
The concerned, they met with the concerned citizens. I was at the board meeting last night and talked to Rob Thompson and...
The country and Nelson opinion.
So they've never, they've never...
Yeah, they, they're like, convinced.
Well, they never were, they never were.
But Rob, Rob's coming.
Was just the opposite of what I thought, that Nelson is a shill for Humphrey. I was, no, no, that's what Rob's...
That's what Rob, that's what, that's what, he had heard from the concerned citizens. And, you know, I would have thought this guy...
I've known Kevin a long, long time. Kevin's on a show. But I've had a...
Well, they met with him. They could talk until they're blue in face, like Jim said.
Okay, any other questions for Scott and I? Then we'll move to item 14, the waste disposal agreement.
It's just a standing up, offering to use that, you saw the resolution after you approved the ordinance.
We approve of the resolution before we call for a motion. Mr. Moser, you indicated that...
Sorry.
Isn't this, we had approved this before, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is, I'm sorry, I got, listen, this is, this is what, this is different, I understood. This is the waste disposal agreement with the county. They just wanted us, they, we approved it before, they want us to prove it again because the dates have changed. So all, all the organizations are on board now with it.
Moving Irvine?
Yes, moving Irvine, moving Irvine. So, Simon, Charlie, Irvine were the holdouts, and they all come to the terms, and in fact, Irvine has approved their agreement.
This is just the final, the final, so we had approved it...
Right.
To get on the list, and now...
Because dates have changed, they have to change the dates, and I think I, I think I've highlighted what the changes were from the original agreement to the...
I forgot there are strikers, you can see what those changes were.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jim, Mr. Schaefer. I may be misunderstanding this item, but my understanding of it is that the county has discovered it has more landfill capacity than it had projected at some time in the past. And I would think the reaction to that would be great relief that we weren't going to have to find a new landfill site for a longer time than we previously anticipated we might. Instead, the reaction seems to be that we should encourage and continue people from outside Orange County to come here, pay us, dump their trash in our landfill. That seems to be like a very short-sighted thing to be doing, and I read the staff report carefully. And I read the staff report carefully. I read this from the Newport Beach City Council on their consent form. The only justification I can see to find for this is if the money we generate by doing this will be used for, and for many fine things that we can do. However, I don't see that as justification, because it seems to me the purpose of a landfill is to hold our own trash as long as we can, as little impact as possible on our own landscape. It's not a profit generating thing. If you wanted to generate profit, you could probably find somebody who would come here and pay us to compost all our trees or to mow down our mountains and turn them into gravel, but I don't think you would particularly want to do that. So, absent a clear explanation of why it's in the public's interest to allow others to degrade our own landscape, I just don't understand why the agencies at all.
Well, initially, it was because of the bankruptcy.
Yeah.
That bail our rear ends out of, you know, bankruptcy, but that's gone.
Yes, I don't understand the logic. It seems to me very short sighted. And I would hope that you would not sign on to it.
That's the Waste Management Board and the supervisors that determine that, am I right?
Yes, yes, and to address Mr. Moser's point, everything that we don't sign it, if we don't sign it, then the whole deal will fall through and no one, no one gets part of the agreement. So you want to be the bad guys, you can do that.
Well, it's a matter of helping keep the cost, the unit cost for that.
Landfill operation down. And if, if we don't import trash, we will pay one way or the other.
It's subsidizing our trash. But they did raise the rate, so didn't they?
Yeah.
They're raising every year.
Yeah. But they believe you have to be raised.
Yeah. When we're looking at over 75% conversion, it's going to be lower rates there. We'll be paying more for the other.
Okay.
Well, I mean, yeah.
Sorry, yes, I do need action on this one. I'll move for approval to adopt motion 201-6-878. And then approve.
I'll take them. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor? Aye. In the opposition, motion carries four to zero with one director absent.
Your, your comments are well taken, though.
Yeah, they are.
You know, we, but the answer is, it's subsidizing. Our effort.
Like 40 years from now, we may be looking.
Right.
Maybe we'll be at 100% conversion by then. That's our goal.
That's our goal.
That's right.
Okay, engineers reports? Rob?
Thank you, Mr. President, board members, on project status report. We have one completed capital improvement project, that's item 17. We have two others under construction. That's the 23rd pump station generator and raising the second half of manholes or adjusting them and making sure that our traffic happens. So those two are under construction. We have three projects out to business, bid opening on Tuesday. So a lot going on. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. I know that it's like 400 plus manholes that they're working on. Will they complete that this year?
Well, there's actually 40s on there. So that'll be done, yeah, that'll be done.
Wendy, are we, well, Scott, maybe, are we having a discussion on C I P projects in the next study session or?
Yes, yes, I believe, yes, we're, yes.
And that, the intent.
The matter is to prioritize the future C I P projects.
Yeah, just again, give me an update of the current project we're working on and what the future projects are in the head and see that in the, in the forward direction, if that's the right direction you want to go.
Any other questions?
Our purchase of the building might have an impact on what we do for C I P too, wouldn't it?
Well, I think that's still the reason why you're going to lease purchasing, so it won't have a lesser impact on us. So, you know, at 220, 230, $5,000 a year, sure, it'll have a, some impact, maybe a little minor impact. With the issue of the impact, that's where we have to come back, is project 101, you know, how much money you want to put on that, gives me, we need about $7 million for that. So that's, that's the part that's going to have impact on other C I P projects.
Seven, even after we have a million dollars taken out for modeling?
Yes, yes, and we'll, and we'll show that in our press session.
Actually, that's a new, new estimate.
You know, Rob, you're right, there's 43 manholes, I just, just read it.
You didn't put your glasses on.
No, I don't have glasses.
Want to borrow mine?
I read it.
Want to borrow mine?
Any other questions for us?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Item 15, Concourse of Interest Report, there are three projects here that I am the eighth year of record. The first one, there's really not any sewer work there. The drainage project, flooding of buildings going on that I am assisting on. The other two are both four units residential, the column project in the city. And we set up, replace secondary system to check the plans, inspect the work and take care of interest business. So that's been working very well. Happy to answer your question.
Thanks, Rob. 17.
Thank you. This one does require action. We have completed and would like to clarify that this is the core work of the station was we committed to keeping it to save that million dollars. We had to rush in and take off the band-aids and rubber bands because that's what we had with the thinking of the abandoned, so we're waiting and replacing the most important things, pumps, the bases, some of the piping valves. But that work's been done. There will be a little electrical work in future and way down the road, maybe we'll replace the forced main, but for now, we're in good shape.
And you replaced the cabinets and things, electrical cabinets?
The electrical cabinet, that'll be, that's where that, as well as the aesthetics of the cabinet.
What's the cost for the forced main replacement?
Well, first of all, we're, it's very short. It's actually, we've got the hill right next to somebody, it'll be 100 feet. It might be lineable. We hadn't done an assessment of it yet, so don't really have a cost, but even if it were, put in a new one, it's pretty much in the dirt and grass, so it would not be that expensive. Are you recommending highest passing on items one, two, or three?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion?
I just had one little item discussion, Tony Clark. One of the things I sign is at the very end, that I verify that I'm the president of the board? I don't think I've ever seen this before, have I?
You have.
Okay. Then I just want to make sure.
We just want to make sure.
I just want to make sure I knew who I was, you know? At times I do forget, but I'm just, just making sure.
Good question.
There's a question, Alan, is it okay to make that same motion with both one and two at the same time or not?
I think they should be two separate motions.
Okay, then we'll amend that to, I'll withdraw my first, we'll just make, this is for just the first one, Bob.
Okay, yes.
No, I'll second that motion.
Okay, so then I'll call for the question on item one, accept the improvements, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Passes unanimously, four to nothing with one director absent.
Move, move. Item three.
Second. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Passes unanimously, four to zero with one director absent. Thank you, Rob. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. President. Request that this item be continued until such time as the improvements for the new building are determined.
Okay, any discussion on that?
What's your timetable on that study? When will we discuss on this, at a study session?
I think we're going to do it as a special meeting. We're going to do a special meeting, so we're meeting Monday with a consultant to get the ball rolling and then soon as we get that note, we'll, we'll try to consider a special meeting.
I think, yeah, we have to do that. Fire with anyone?
Absolutely.
Okay. Then do we have a motion to continue now?
Move for continuing.
Second.
Another discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Continuation passes four to zero with one director absent. Attorneys report?
I have nothing for you tonight, Mr. President.
What the meetings? Jim?
Well, we talked about the meeting we had with, you know, project 101. I wasn't at the regular meetings with Eddie Buck and going.
You were at the O C S D board meetings?
Yes.
They, they dealt with giving approval for the, for the, for the budget calendar. Had a finance meeting, which is a separate corporation to deal with. We adjourned to the finance committee meeting. And then came back, and basically just to approve the minutes. I think it's, it's a procedural matter that they have to have the meeting period.
I have, there were a lot of small projects. Almost every committee was pretty busy. They, they still haven't determined.
LAFCO hasn't determined who will take care of the east Orange County sewer lines or the Tustin lines. There are two agents. Irvine Ranch Water District.
I thought they gave it to Irvine.
Oh, the LAFCO?
LAFCO's, I think LAFCO's.
Oh, no, not LAFCO, huh?
It's still before LAFCO.
No, no, it was.
Our board approved it. Oh, okay.
Well, I think what they approved was paying east Orange County what they had involved in the project, a couple hundred thousand dollars.
But you, you are, you are, I think you're more in touch with the county.
But anyway, so LAFCO still has to make the approval.
Yeah, I knew that, but I mean, but they went through our hurdle.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, every, every ISOC executive committee, either Fissler or.
John Withers.
John Withers. Give, they're always mentioning it and they, they always say they're waiting on something before LAFCO's going to do anything.
County may have approved it, but LAFCO still has to, there's still paperwork they have to do.
The O C S D's giving it to Irvine.
Yeah, yeah, we gave it the blessing, yeah. Orange County walked out of the meeting pretty pissed off.
Anyway, that's most of what I wanted to tell you. It was a pretty quick meeting.
No further discussion.
Mark?
Yeah, we did not have a meeting this morning.
ISOC Executive Committee Meeting. Couple things that are on the table for us is, we haven't done an audit for ISOC for quite some time, and so we're in the process of getting an audit done. Another problem we ran into is our treasurer, of course, had a house fire a while back, about a year or two back, and records were kept with her instead of that Orange County Water District.
Pendigan?
And she's not very mechanic. What's that?
Excuse me, on top of the silver bronze, you had?
That's a rental property. This is at her home she had a fire. So we're working on getting an audit done. It's become a little more complicated than I envisioned. The, the other item we continue to hash out is speakers. It's the job of the first vice president to get speakers for our quarterly meetings. Unfortunately, our first vice president doesn't take that responsibility seriously, so we struggle with trying to get speakers for our quarterly meetings, so.
And the president meets with him often and?
Yeah, we talk quite often. And so I took it upon myself to form an ad hoc committee of three volunteers to get speakers. And that, that was some resistance from a couple of people, but someone's got to do it. So unfortunately, I'm going to miss the executive committee meeting next Tuesday, so if you happen to be in town, you can go with that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
What, Mike had that last name? You know, I've got somebody who is a professional speaker, who travels the country, you know.
I have just about any cases, like, give me the context of that.
I mean, he'd be very fascinating. Grant Chambers. We, we had a couple of suggestions.
Yeah, I think we're going to, you know, at the last quarterly meeting, of course, we have the county CEO and I thought he did a great job. I thought he was really informative. That's the kind of stuff that, that goes over.
Grand jury? You never did the grand jury before.
Well, the grand jury is tough because it changes, you know? There's an adversarial thing supposed to occur. We had a speaker, I, the last couple of days I've been in Indian Wells, somebody had to do it. At the public, the Public Risk Management Authority is what it is, and there are risk managers from all over the country at the same. We had a speaker, at the first session we had, an investigator and attorney who talked about how to tell if someone's lying. Title, title of the topic was, everybody lies. And they spent a little over an hour talking about how to pick up, how to tell someone's lying. And that would be a great topic to take, although a bunch of politicians in the room might have sent it very well.
Poker players would enjoy it.
Poker players would really enjoy it. But that's really it from ISOC.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
We had talked about a month ago about, and speaker that I might be able to bring to circle back with our banker, and he connected me with the guy. And so I'm going to reach out to him and it's okay, I can share his information with you and.
Just give him my contact information, Mark, that's perfectly fine. I remember we did talk about that.
Yeah, yeah, interesting guy. The guy used to be in the Secret Service under a few different administrations and now has his own firm doing cybersecurity. And he's focusing on water districts and how they're potential to being cyber threats.
Oh, yeah, that.
That'd be perfect.
Oh, yeah.
Special districts. Yeah, we had him at S D R M A. He's scary stuff. That'd be great, that'd be really good.
Pick a name and soon you have your face pulled out, soon they have everything about it.
That one speaker is on one conference, he actually hacked.
He had to do C S D A.
Well, we, S D R M A, we had him at.
Right there, right there in front of God and everybody.
Yeah.
Well, we had to go to S D R M A Claims Day and then we referred him over to C S D A. But he actually picked himself or his computer and he would hack into these security systems, like people, you know how they control their alarms and their lights and everything on there? And he hacked into these people and he had it up on the computer and he'd say, okay, this address in Poughkeepsie, New York or wherever, and he'd push a button, their lights are now going off and on and they don't know who's doing, I mean, it's scary, scary stuff. But then they can't figure out how to get into an iPhone, so.
And we should get the, we should get.
Just one, not yours.
Rick Hammer?
He said he'll live on Capri.
Did you guys move on Capri?
We just closed escrow.
Really?
That's one of the best reaches close to me.
Really, it really is.
Yeah, it does every year.
I was going to say, I'm going to watch some cinema.
No, they don't, because they don't, they don't live on Capri.
Director Schaefer's not here to talk about C S D A, but I will throw in, I, I'm in the Education Committee for C S D A, and we had a, a conference call two weeks ago for the annual conference, and I'm part of a subcommittee that picks the speakers that go. Aren't you glad? And what Megan from C S D A did is she sent us a whole list and I don't know, there were like 20 different people, speakers. And we were supposed to review each one and watch their YouTube and stuff. And then we voted or we gave our recommendations to the C S D A staff that day on a conference call about this list of people. And there were two of us that picked one speaker in particular that probably won't go over, but it's Bill Walton, former basketball player. I don't, I'm not sure if I watched the same videos and stuff that some of these other people on that. Um, I don't, I'm not sure if I watched the same videos and stuff that some of these other people on that committee did, but. I tried to think of all of you guys, who you'd want to hear, not.
John Wood and stuff, you know.
Yeah, Walton, I think Walton would be an outstanding speaker. They had some guy that was a former Navy SEAL who participated in the killing that.
Oh, huh.
Bin Laden, and I think, I would love to hear something like that, but. Um, SDRMA, we had a board meeting earlier in the month. Primary focus was our strategic plan, which will probably disseminate down to all of the districts fairly soon. But the big news is, I'm sure you've got the, the bulletin from SDRMA, no rate increase?
Hmm, that's good.
So rates are gonna, and, um, having a couple of insurance agents on that board, I think, really helps because, you know, we give the, we call it a dividend, but I'm, I forget the term that SDRMA uses. Where money goes back to release the rates. And, uh, Merle and I both are very strong advocates on the board to reward the districts that deserve, and our district deserved it, so we should see some relief there too. Did you? Always, always.
As you mentioned, we're paying for your trips.
No, we're not. You're not, SDRMA is.
Yeah, who, who do you think funds SDRMA?
Never mind. Uh, um, other meetings qualifying for re- first, anybody else have anything? Oh, I did have, well, I'm sorry. One other meeting, um, I did meet with the general manager on the 17th, probably the most expensive coffee place in the county, but I paid for my own coffee.
It's all five bucks now.
Not in my kitchen?
Not in Starbucks.
Yeah, I did get a grug.
Director Fairman and myself were just.
Two, no.
Last week.
Yeah.
We had a very productive meeting, I think, and appreciate you taking the time to meet.
He buttered you up.
Well, he should, I'm the board president. Any other meetings?
I, I.
Kimmy? Go ahead.
I spoke at this, uh, group down in Mission Viejo, uh, last week and it was about, they wanted to know about the water situation and, but I, but. You know, I brought up a lot of things we're doing here too and, uh, it was really kind of fun because these people were very interested and pretty knowledgeable, you know? But I went through the, you know, the groundwater replenishment thing with them and, and how, you know, our just deals. Aspects of it and it was, uh, I talked to him for about an hour and, you know.
It's amazing. I'll, I'll be talking to someone, it's amazing how much I know about stuff that I didn't, everybody would know about.
Just comes spewing out of your mouth.
Talking about anaerobic digestion and some of the stuff and you go, now look at you go, are you serious? You know, so, good. Any other meetings then? All right, then we'll move, we have no old business or new business. Uh, director comments? Anybody got any?
Only, uh, have, have you made a, um.
We have to do a presentation. Oh, it's the second year. That's, that's the reason we haven't given a budget schedule. I knew there was a reason.
Well, you noticed I'm hiding behind your iPad.
Does that go through 2017?
Yes, yes, yes. Um, but at this point, we are going to adjourn to a closed session regarding public employee performance evaluation, uh, general manager and the negotiator, me. So at this point, you know what your closed session?
Mr. President, there's actually two, we're actually going into two different closed sessions and in one, you know, general manager can be part of it if you're going to speak to him about his evaluation. And in the part in which you're giving authority to me, your negotiated general manager will have to step out.
Uh, so for the evaluation, we'll do that first.
Okay. Are we okay to not come back?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay, well, we convene to open session. Um, the board has given me direction then as the labor negotiator to meet with the general manager and discuss the terms of his agreement for the next year. So with that, uh, if you have a few minutes to stick around.
Sure.
Then we will adjourn.
All right, let me.
Okay. All right, great. Have a nice weekend, you guys.
You too.
Everyone else.
See you a couple of weeks.